Distinct pleasure of starting this evening. And my role tonight is my favorite role, limited. Welcome to all that have joined us tonight. Thank you so much for, I think, what will be a very informative evening, talking about all the ways in which St. Mary's County Public Schools serves not only our splendid and wonderful and gifted students, but also the larger community, because indeed we are preparing them for the future. So we have a really action-packed night. We are joined by many, many, many people who work on behalf of the school system, from the classroom to the principal's office. Principal Egan, thank you so much for being here tonight and being the consummate host once again. We find ourselves at the Tech Center quite frequently. We also have Principal Dauthard, thank you very much for coming out this evening. We've been joined by our board member extraordinaire, Ms. Mary Washington. Thank you so much for being here. We also have Mr. Jim Davis, board member here as well. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. So again, I said my role is limited. You are all nice and settled down, and that's really great. I'm going to hand it over to your emcee for the evening, well, at least the starting emcee, before we hand it to the subject matter expert, who's going to introduce other subject matter experts. But Dr. Marr, a round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And welcome, everyone, to the third in our series of town hall meetings focused specifically on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future and how we are implementing it. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to talk with you, share what we're doing, and also get some input and answer some questions. So we've got a nice evening set for you. We are live streaming the event on our website at www.smcps.org, and it will also be posted to our YouTube channel as well. So if you are watching at home, hello, welcome. And of course, if you have any questions that come up after this evening or throughout the evening, you can certainly email us at blueprint@smcps.org, and we will make sure that that question gets to the right people to answer it as well. So we're going to have, the way the evening is structured, we have some information, we've got a panel discussion, and then we're going to take a little short break while we get into some table groups to just talk with you and hear from each of you. And Mrs. Bachner will walk through some of that. Let me give you just a little bit of background, particularly if you're new to the Blueprint or just want a little overview. This was some legislation that was passed about four years ago, and then a second round of it passed in 2021 after the pandemic to make some adjustments. We have had steering committee meetings over the last couple of years. We've had a lot of public input around it. We've had board meetings. We've had these kind of sessions as well. And we turned in last year our Part One of the plan to address the Blueprint. Now, there's about a 10-year run-up to the full implementation of the Blueprint, so there are steps that we're taking along the way. And then we have another plan that we're going to be submitting later this spring. And so this is an opportunity for us to talk with you as we work on those plans. As well, if you go to, first of all, just a quick overview, if you don't know, this is focusing on Pillar Three, which is college and career readiness. We have four other pillars. We've had two town halls already, one about early childhood, one is about resources for student success, and yes, we went out of order, but that was based on sort of what's happening within the school year. And the next one that we're going to be doing next month is on teachers and leaders. And of course, around all of this is governance and accountability. And so if you take a look at our website, you can find always on the link on the front page, a link to our Blueprint site, which has all the information, all of our reports, every piece of our plan is there for you, and again, opportunities for input along the way. And so that is either on our main webpage at smcps.org, or you can go to smcps.org/blueprint, and it'll go right to the site. So again, here's our opportunity to talk with you and hear from you, but also to share. There's a lot of information, and Pillar Three is pretty packed with information about college and career readiness, from the curriculum to the pathways for students to planning for post-secondary success. And so to walk you through all that, to lead this discussion tonight, I'd like to introduce Ms. Lisa Bachner, who is our chief academic officer, and she'll introduce the rest of the team as well. Lisa?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Marr. On behalf of the Pillar Three team, we are happy to have you join us this evening, as we share information about Pillar Three requirements and updates, and then provide an opportunity to engage in discussions related to Pillar Three focus areas in order to inform our work and continue moving forward. A very important part of Pillar Three, which is interwoven throughout all parts of the pillar, are partnerships with our community. This evening, I would like to extend a special welcome to some of our community partners that are with us tonight, the College of Southern Maryland, the NAACP, Patuxent Partnerships, and the Tri-County Workforce Development Group. Also, I would like to extend a welcome to all the supervisors, school staff members, and students that are joining us tonight. Our students are the reason we are here and why this discussion of preparing students to be college and career-ready is so important. If you are a student joining us tonight after a very busy school day and probably homework tonight, please stand up to be recognized. Thank you all very much for coming. Pillar Three, college and career readiness, which we all lovingly in education love acronyms called CCR, ensures that every student has access to both support and rigorous course opportunities and pathways so that they are prepared to enter the world of college or the workforce. The expectations for each local school system in the state of Maryland in regard to CCR are as follows: to establish an internationally benchmark curriculum that enables most students to achieve college and career-ready status by the end of grade 10, and then pursue pathways that include AP, early college, and/or rigorous technical education, a fully-aligned instructional system to keep students on track, and setting the college and career readiness standard, CCR, to global standards that certifies that those who reach it have required literacy in English and mathematics to succeed in the first-year college credit-bearing courses, and open enrollment post-secondary institutions, mainly community colleges in the state, and creation of a CTE system that produces graduates ready and qualified to work in-demand fields that will propel Maryland's economic future. You may be asking yourself by now, what determines whether a student is or is not CCR? As recently as January 23rd, the Maryland State Department of Education revised the CCR standard. So right here, right now, the standard is as follows. Option one, students can meet the CCR standard by demonstrating both academic success and math mastery. Academic success is achieved and defined by earning a high school grade point average cumulative non-weighted GPA of 3.0 or higher, and math mastery may be achieved by either earning a final course grade of an A, B, or C in Algebra I, or alternatively by scoring proficient or above, a score of three or four, on the Algebra I MCAP assessment. Option two, students can meet the CCR standard by scoring proficient or above, score three or four, on both the English 10 MCAP and the Algebra I MCAP. It is to be noted that MSDU will also continue to recognize the interim standard that was in place before these options until June of 2025. In addition to these blueprint standards, expectations, which help us to set both long and short-term goals for our work, we must also adhere to and are accountable to identified blueprint requirements. These requirements include a career counseling program for middle and high school students that is provided collaboratively with the Workforce Development Board, the community college, and our local school system. We need to adapt curriculum and instruction and the organization of the school day to enable more students to achieve CCR by the end of 10th grade, and then to identify students who may be falling behind and developing a plan to get them back on track. We need to develop and report to the state a ninth-grade track data. We need to provide a program of study for those who have not met CCR by the end of 10th grade with alternative approaches to tailor specific school student needs. We need to provide dual enrollment, advanced placement, accelerated pathways, CT credentials, and apprenticeship opportunities for students. At this time, I'm going to ask our panelists to come up, please, and take a seat. On our panel this evening, we have four leaders who have been instrumental in leading our efforts to meet both the blueprint expectations and the blueprint requirements for CCR. Each leader will provide you with an update related to their Pillar Three focus area. As you listen to this information, consider any questions you may have for the panel, your thoughts and ideas that you may want to share as you gauge in small-group conversations or ask for the entire group. There are pencils and note cards in the middle of your table. If you do have any questions as they speak, you can jot those down. Our first panelist tonight and system leader is Mike Boyle, supervisor of CTE. Mr. Boyle will be sharing information on our CTE programs, industry certifications, and the apprenticeship program. Our second panelist and system leader is Colleen Gill, supervisor of instructional programs. Ms. Gill will be sharing information on our advanced placement and dual enrollment programming. Our third panelist and system leader is BJ Dauthard, principal at Great Mills High School. Mr. Dauthard will be sharing information about the ninth-grade tracker and support pathways. And our fourth panelist and system leader is Corinne Moreno, career counseling program coordinator who works out of the Department of Student Services. She will be sharing information for both the counseling programs or the career liaison programs at both the middle and the high school level. So at this time, Mr. Boyle.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. So I'm here tonight to give you a little oversight of our CTE programs and where we are and what it looks like today. But I do want to remind you of one thing, and one of the earlier slides that Ms. Bachner had, it had that expectation. And remember what that was, especially in the CTE. The goal is the creation of a CTE system that produces graduates ready and qualified to work in in-demand fields and will propel Maryland's economic future. So with that in mind, I'm kind of bringing it to that set, now I want to tell you about what we are doing here now. So we offer a total of 34 distinct pathways, with 11 available at the high schools and 24 here at the Tech Center. In addition to the pathways, there's a wide selection of CTE electives available. Last year, more than 5,000 students were enrolled in CTE courses, collectively participating in over 8,000 case class periods. Our primary objective is to establish strong links between our high-quality programs and the world of both work and post-secondary education. We do this by equipping our students with a combination of academic and technical skills that align with industry-validated standards as well as traditional educational foundations. Our foundations in our program are the blending of the essential subjects like math, science, and writing with our technical skills required for that career pathway. This fusion empowers industrial-recognized credentials. Furthermore, our students have the unique opportunity to gain practical experience through job shadowing, work-based learning, apprenticeships, and internships. One aspect of Pillar Three places a significant focus on our students obtaining industrial-recognized credentials and/or participating in our youth apprenticeship before graduation. Last year, our CTE students attained an impressive 590 earned industrial-recognized credentials. Furthermore, our apprenticeship Maryland program currently houses 66 participants, marking an increase from the 41 that we had last year. So in closing, our CTE programs provide students with the essential skills, knowledge, and hands-on experience needed to succeed in today's rapidly changing world. Our combination of academic rigor with hands-on training empower our students to address real-world challenges with confidence. Upon graduation, our students are well-prepared for their next chapter, whether that be higher education or immediately into our workforce. Have we achieved the blueprint expectations? In a general sense, yeah, but perhaps not completely. Nevertheless, I want to assure you that SMCPs CTE programs have a strong foundation, and I am confident that we will meet the blueprint expectations well within their timeline. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Ms. Gill?
Good evening. As Ms. Bachner said, I am the supervisor of instructional programs, and part of my role, I oversee the five SMCPs academic academies, the Middle School and High School STEM, AVPA, GIS, and AOF, aspects of the Freshman Academy, and the instructional side of Advanced Placement Courses, or AP courses. The aspects of my job that relate to the blueprint would be the AP coursework and dual enrollment courses. And that's what I'm going to address tonight. If you're not familiar with the AP program, Advanced Placement Courses afford students the opportunity to take collegiate-level courses while still in high school. Managed by the College Board, which is the organization that also oversees PSAT and SAT assessments, the 24-25 AP catalog will contain 40 different courses for students to take while in high school. And we're proud to say that SMCPs currently offers 32 of those courses, with two just being added by the Board of Education, so we will offer 34 of the courses next year. Each AP course has an associated, yet optional, exam given annually in May, and that is the aspect of the course where students have the potential to earn college credit. It's a collegiate-level course during high school where there's increased rigor and learning. However, that doesn't necessarily earn them college credit. They have to sit for the exam, and then they would score either a three, four, or five on a five-point scale to be considered passing the AP exam. Just because they pass the AP exam doesn't mean every college is going to award them credit for it. So that's a point students have to look at each individual college they plan to attend. The Blueprint requires SMCPs to have pathways for all students, part of which is increasing access and availability to AP coursework. It has been our policy that SMCPs high school students are invited to register for AP coursework. All SMCPs students are invited to register for AP coursework. I can't stress that enough. I would personally love for every single St. Mary's County Public School student to attempt one AP course in their high school career, no matter the course, no matter the content area. Because according to the College Board, students who take even just one, sit through the course, not necessarily taking the exam, are better prepared for the rigors of the collegiate classroom than students who do not take an AP course. Blueprint also states that students attaining CCR will have their AP assessments paid for by the county, and that actually did happen this year. Dual enrollment, another aspect of my, under my purview. So as with AP coursework, offering more accessibility and availability of dual enrollment is a part of the Blueprint. Dual enrollment courses offer both high school credit and collegiate credit through partnership with the College of Southern Maryland. So they differ from AP courses in that it's a guaranteed college credit. Currently, SMCPs offers 65 approved dual enrollment courses. Beginning next year, students can take courses offered at the CSM Lenartown Campus, and SMCPs will provide transportation via bus to and from the campus throughout the school day. As required by the Blueprint, CCR students who have gone through the SMCPs approval process will have their CSM tuition paid for by SMCPs. However, eligible, non-CCR students are still invited to take dual enrollment courses. They will just have to pay for them themselves. Dual enrollment courses can be offered virtually or in person based on the college's schedule, and then down the road, dual enrollment coursework could be offered from other colleges, as the Blueprint encourages additional partnerships with institutions of higher education. Not a part of the Blueprint, but worth mentioning, is that SMCPs has made the independent decision to pay for all AP exams and dual enrollment courses for students receiving free and reduced meals. So I'm really proud that we're doing that. Okay? And that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Principal Dauthard?
Good evening. As Ms. Bachner stated, I'm BJ Dauthard, proud principal of Great Mills High School. As part of my role, I work with staff to provide supports for students to meet CCR requirements by 10th grade with support such as Freshman Academy, as well as work with all students as they explore and determine their career and work pathways. As a high school, one of our responsibilities is to introduce students to different career paths and career opportunities. Before the start of ninth grade, we work collaboratively with students in middle school to review each student's previous grades in the four content areas, attendance data, and other factors to determine if they're on track or may have risk factors that would impede their graduation on time. If a student has identified risk factors, we can support them through our Freshman Academy. Freshman Academy is just one resource that supports 75 of our highest-need students over the past three years. We have had over a 95% success rate at getting these 75 students to pass five or more credits and become sophomores.
That's a clap.
The ninth-grade tracker is reported to the Maryland State Department of Education at the end of each year. That reports, among other things, how many of our ninth-grade students earn the credits needed to attain sophomore status. As shared, earning five credits by the end of freshman year allows students to attain sophomore status. Research shows that repeating the ninth grade increases your chances of dropping out of high school by 60%. If attendance is an issue, you are more likely to fail classes because it's challenging to learn if you're not in school. We use the ninth-grade tracker data to identify and determine what types of supports need to be implemented for these students to be successful. After we determine if a student is CCR or not, in 10th grade, we get busy helping students work to ensure that each student has an actual plan for their college or career life after high school. We understand that this may change, and we're willing to make as many changes as needed because we know students are more successful when working towards a plan. Part of our preparation includes planting seeds of potential career pathways through attending career fairs, college fairs, career talks with guest speakers, and continuous work to motivate students to keep working and to keep an open mind. It's our job to introduce students to a variety of options that will exist for them after high school. We regularly have colleges, universities, trade schools, community colleges, all branches of the military, labor unions, and community employees looking for interns, apprentices, and employees in all of our high schools. These new college and career readiness standards have a strong focus on life after high school, making sure that students see high school graduation as more than just a finish line, but as a milestone towards much larger life goals.
Thank you, Principal Dauthard. And last but not least, Corinne Moreno?
Good evening. I am the Career Counseling Program Coordinator. One of the elements of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future College and Career Readiness component is the implementation of a career counseling program delivered in partnership with our local workforce development and our community college. As a result of this initiative, each middle and high school was assigned a career advisor who is responsible for helping students identify career options for after high school. As the program coordinator, I work with our partners and career advisors to implement a career counseling program that aligns with the blueprint requirements. Career advisors work with students in career development and exploration. While Naviance, our college and career platform continues to be used in classroom lessons and the college application process, we are incorporating the RIASEC model into our career development program. In partnership with the Tri-County Workforce Development Board, the advisors and I were trained using the RIASEC model by Ed Hildago from Educators Cooperative. The RIASEC model is a career language that incorporates the realistic, investigates artistic, social, enterprising, and conventional themes. The use of the RIASEC language enables career advisors to facilitate meaningful conversations and discussions with students about their career interests. Engagement in the self-discovery process and career conversations with advisors prepare students to make more informed decisions about their course of study in high school and the development of post-graduation plans. In addition to providing career development lessons, career advisors invite representatives from various careers and industries from within the community to speak with students. Additionally, career advisors work with local industry representatives to plan both regional and high-school-based career fairs. For example, last week, we went to the Spark Fair, which was hosted by the Patuxent Partnership. We had over 350 students attend that fair. There are four more additional career fairs planned for the spring at SMCPs school sites. Essentially, the Blueprint Career Counseling Mandate has allowed us to extend our career development efforts with students beyond the classroom by introducing hands-on experiences, exploratory field trips, and informed conversations about careers and the world of work.
Thank you, Corinne. As you have heard, we have done much work to ensure that we are complying with both the blueprint expectations and requirements for CCR. As a school system, our next steps include work to develop a CCR support plan and process for those 10th graders that do not meet CCR, continue to explore and provide supports, increase access, and more opportunities for dual enrollment, advanced placement, CTE pathways, and apprenticeships, and to continue to review and revise as needed the career counseling program in both middle and high schools as we complete this first year. Sorry, I went all the way to the end. Third year, first year. At this time, we're going to call, I believe, Dr. Marr to maybe gather any of the questions, perhaps, that are at the tables?
There are blue cards on everybody's table if you have any questions. I know we've had some questions that we know are being asked, so you may want to start with some of them.
I will do that.
Meanwhile, if you have a question, write on the blue card. We'll collect them, and then we'll sort of filter them up here, so this way we can get the panelists to answer any questions. So if you look and you see any of the questions related to the topics presented, you've got the experts in front of you, and they'd be happy to answer the questions. So write them on the blue cards, and meanwhile, if you want to start with the ones we have.
I will. Mr. Boyle, you ready for the first question?
Absolutely.
Okay. How long do students spend in their apprenticeships?
Well, it's not necessarily the length of time, but they have a couple of requirements. They have to have a, it's a four-credit course. The first credit is a related instruction. So if the student that's going into the apprenticeship doesn't have what, let's say, a strength that they need or a skill set for that position, they would be taking that. In the cases of out of our building here, in most cases, our kids who are going to apprenticeships already have a skill set, and that's why they're being sought after. So once they have that complete, the other three credits are time. So it's a 450 hours of a paid apprenticeship. And they can do that, they can start in the summer, so it's not necessarily a time, a length of time, it's that 450 hours.
Thank you. I'm going to jump all the way down to Ms. Moreno. How often are students receiving career exploration opportunities in middle and high school?
So in the middle schools...
Need the mic.
All right. In the middle schools, the career advisors are using Naviance Curriculum Lessons, and in addition to those lessons, they've been doing the RIASEC. So they've added career exploratory lessons to at least once a quarter and then beyond as teachers allow them to push in. They've also have done things with VR goggles, so they've had virtual experiences with careers, as well as they're now kind of planning their career fairs, and they're getting excited to try and to keep exploring students with different industries. The high school has taken a focus on freshman academy students with learning the RIASEC language with the goal of letting them know the career language so that they can figure... figure out what career path is best for them, and then we can engage them maybe junior year to a more specific plan about graduation. And they have also been going to the career fairs, and they've had a lot of lunch and learns with different people from industry, and a great conversation chat happened yesterday at Great Mills High School as well, so.
Good. Thank you very much. Sorry, Mr. Boyle, but you're up again.
Good.
Are there plans to extend apprentice programs beyond Forest Tech Center to all of the high schools?
Yeah, so it's been a, we've, we've got a great structure right now that's going, so we're taking it little steps at a time, and I think that's important for it to grow to where we have to. At some point, we're going to have to grow out to those, and that's, we have learned so much in the last five or six years that we have been working with Patuxent Partnerships. So I think we've got a pretty good handle on it. Now it's time for us to start stretching out. So as, as we get folks trained, we're going to be able to get to the, to the high schools as well.
Okay, thank you. The next question from the audience, actually, I think Mr. Dothard, as well as Ms. Gill, can probably have a little bit of perspective on each of those. So we'll start with Ms. Gill, but how do you know if your programming is working for all students, in particular, looking at data?
The AP program?
I would assume, yes, AP data, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. How do we know that the AP program is working for all students? Well, there's a few different data points. Number one would be class grades. Number two would be teacher-student discussions, what their feedback is. Number three would be AP scores for the students who actually sit for the AP tests. So that would be idea that the data that we use to show that our program is working, or in some times, the AP test scores are a little lower than we'd like. And so then we reevaluate, and that's where we would retrain teachers, perhaps. I didn't mention that for, in order to teach AP classes, the College Board does offer specific training that teachers are able to take during the summer. Most of our teachers take it online through Goucher, where they are taught to basically level up to the rigor of the college program. There are two courses, the AP capstone courses, where teachers have to take, the training is required. So we do retrain teachers, we do have discussions, we do have PD with teachers to help them address student need, but that would be the data that we use.
Okay. And Mr. Dothard, that same question, as it pertains to maybe students who are falling behind or need support at your school.
Okay, and I would like to add too-
Absolutely.
-what Ms. Gill also said, that at the high school level, we are looking at data as far as test scores, actual letter grades that they're earning, talking to teachers, as well as, and we're doing those things to, to recommend students so that we, and we do pay attention at the, to the number of students and the diversity of the students that are enrolled in our AP and, and the upper-level courses to, to grow, to grow that diversity. Some of the things that we put in place, we have our NHS students and our tutoring during lunch hour, we're using One Lunch to, to get tutoring done. We are using One Lunch to get peer tutoring, peer tutoring happening, we have after-school tutoring programs, and we also have, we do, we, we get kind of flexible with some of the scheduling to give them, give kids, there's an AP study course that we can give to students in their schedule, they don't earn a credit for it, but we can also put in, in place the things that they need to, to stay on top of, of their studies. It, a lot of times, it is a lot more rigorous than some of the other classes, so giving them that extra time and extra teachers to, to talk to.
And I just want to clarify, AP study period is offered at all three of the high schools, but I also want to clarify that the, the supports Mr. Dothard talked about aren't offered only to AP students. Their support's offered to, to all students.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moreno, question for you. Are there plans to receive feedback from the students on how to improve the career fairs?
Yes. So after the Spark Fair, I believe there was a response that they could have used a QR code or a code to kind of respond to how they felt about the career fair itself, and as we host them, we'll absolutely do that. And we're, and we also are trying to now get feedback on presenters who come during One Lunch as well, so that we can, we can find out from the student's perspective, is that some, somebody you'd like to see, is that some industry that you still want us to have somebody present on? So we are asking. So it's usually a QR code or a follow-up from the career advisor in that building.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gill, I'm going to ask you this question on dual enrollment, but I can help you if you need. Okay. Are there financial barriers to increasing dual enrollment, and how is that being addressed?
All right, so I'm going to throw that back to you.
That's what I thought. There are indeed, as you, as we shared, that this year, we paid for, for students, whether they were CCR, CCR or not, if they signed up for AP exams, CTE certifications, as well as dual enrollment courses, both in our schools and on the CSM campus. Given the legislation that we, we need to adhere to the letter of the law, and we have to pretty much do that for fiscal reasons, we are only going to be able to afford, coming next year, to support the dual enrollment classes for CCR and our farm students. If you remember, Ms. Gill shared that that was a commitment by our school system for dual enrollment courses at CSM for AP exams that will be taken next spring, as well as CTE certifications next year. And the last question is back to you, Mr. Boyle. Why doesn't the NJROTC program have a third instructor, instructor when they are in need of one? And you can probably throw this back to me if you want to, because it's probably my fault.
Well, yeah, it, the hardest part about, with that is, there's trends, right? I mean, things go, they, they ebb and flow. I think we're at a point where we're at that point at Great Mills, and we hope we get to that point at Chautauqua as well. But I'll pass the whys to Lisa.
And the reason why at this point is, is we, I'm sure if you've read, watched the board meetings, staffing and supporting the staff that we have at, at this point is, is a little bit difficult with the budget implications that we have coming in, in front of us. So to add another staff member in programming, although we would love to, and we completely, all of us, every single person, is very, very appreciative of the partnerships that make NJROTC so incredibly successful, that is just not something we could do this year. Hopefully, we can in future years, but we could not do that this year. So, Dr. Marr, do you want to share with us our next steps?
Yeah, if you want to go to the next slide. Okay. So for this next part, now, we know that there are still several questions that several, that you might have. There's some of these that were grouped together, we tried to address the big topic areas that were posed in the questions. And any others, of course, we're going to now go into small group sessions. You've got four topics across the top: CTE programs and apprenticeships, advanced placement and dual enrollment, supports to help students to attain CCR, and career counseling in middle and high school. So what we're going to do is we're going to take four sections here, and we're going to allow you to go to those tables, choose with your feet which group you'd like to go to. We're going to put little table tents on each one of them. So we're going to go in the order around the screen. So CTE pathways, we're going to be over here, and then we're going to go to the next group of tables, will be advanced placement and dual enrollment, and then supports for students, and then career counseling in middle and high school. And we can pull the tables together in long tables, so you have a nice big group, and our panelists are going to distribute themselves. We've got instructional supervisors who will also go to the groups, so we can have a rich discussion. There's some starter questions on the screen that you can certainly use to begin your conversation, but at this time, we're going to end the stream and say goodbye to our folks at home, because this is just going to be a, a nice, big collective conversation at these tables. So thank you all for joining us, and have a great rest of the evening with the conversation. Thank you. And thank you to the panelists and Ms. Bachner.
Yes, thank you.